This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:58.
Okay.
May 7th to 19th in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting executive official, member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Amundson?
Here.
Chair Barlow?
Here.
Ms. Marvin?
Here.
Ms. Nathan?
Mr. Schlusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Ms. Workman?
Here.
Let's stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have kids.
Oh.
We have kids.
We have kids.
This is student council from Franklin Elementary.
All right.
All right.
Awesome. I thought I was going to have to leave you.
He's got a great shirt.
There we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party's stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And these are students from the Franklin and Montessori Elementary School Students' Council. Thank you, students and parents, for bringing your students.
My mic went out of the pocket.
In the absence of our school board clerk, Ms. Nathan, I am appointing Ms. Admitson to fill in her state. Approval of agenda, this is an action item.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Other one changes anyway, so we're good.
Who's in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements and communications, recognitions, Mr. Munoz.
This week, we are celebrating the important role of our school nurses playing to health and well-being of our students. Rochester Public Schools employs 16 licensed school nurses and 31 health office nurses. Our nurses contribute to our schools in many ways: administer medication, provide first aid, treat illness, develop emergency healthcare plans, conduct vision and hearing screenings, contribute to special education and 501 evaluations, and much more. School nurses are critical to the learning of our students, and we are grateful for the contribution they make every day. Our RIT staff has created a short video to highlight the daily activities of a school nurse.
the difference that school nutrition professionals make every child who comes through the cafeteria. Between preparing healthy meals for our students, adhering to strict nutrition standards, and navigating student food allergies, and offering services with a smile, school nutrition professionals are true heroes. Here are some interesting facts. Our 140 SNS staff members serve over 680,000 breakfasts and 1.7 million lunches per year. We serve supper at six sites: Franklin, Gage, Riverside, John Adams, John Marshall, and the ALC, and the after-school snack, the fresh fruit vegetable program, and summer food site. We participate in the Department of Defense Fresh Produce Program, in which schools are able to allocate a portion of their commodity entitlement in purchasing a wider variety of fresh fruits and vegetables. We support local producers through our purchases of products such as milk, which just happens to be 2 million cartons per year. Here's a fun fact: Rochester Public Schools students love bananas. Who doesn't love bananas? We purchased nearly 95,000 pounds of bananas this year. To celebrate these efforts, student nutrition leaders worked with our RIT team to create this short slideshow.
It would have been nice for them to be here when we recognized them, but I'm sure they heard us clap. All right, the next group. In honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I would like to thank all of our teachers for their invaluable contributions and commitment to our students and communities. Their passion, hard work, and dedication is instrumental in our students' success, and the impact they have lasts a lifetime. One of the things that I want to read, there's a poem that was given to a Minnesota, who was Guy Dowd, who was a Minnesota teacher several years ago. But one of the things, when you're recognized as the National Teacher of the Year, you get to go to the White House and meet the President. So, at this time, it was President Reagan, and he handed Guy Dowd a little poem, so I'm going to share that poem with you. "You are the molders of their dreams, the gods who build or crush their young beliefs of right or wrong. You are the spark that sets a flame, the poet's hand, or lights the flame in some great singer's song. You are the gods of young, the very young. You are the guardian of a million dreams. Your every smile or frown can heal or pierce a heart. Yours are the 100 lives, the 1,000 lives. Yours is the pride of loving them, the sorrow too. Your patient work, your touch, make you the god of hope, that fills their souls with dreams and makes those dreams come true." Again, thank you for everything that you do every day to give our students the hope and to make their dreams come true. Our RIT staff had created a short video to highlight our amazing teachers.
I have teachers that I remember, you know, just because of things they did or conversations we had. I think the ones that I remember most are the ones that actually took the time to talk to me and maybe knew things about me.
Ultimately, they just want somebody that's going to listen to them, to meet them where they are. So, I really try to do that as much as I can. It's not necessarily that I'm teaching math, it's that I'm teaching the kids that are in my room, and what do I have to do to try to reach them?
I think the biggest thing for me is just trying to make a connection, just trying to build a relationship with them, trying to be honest and open, let them know who I am, let them know about my life, share things about me, learn things about them.
I think a kid knows when they're loved, and that part of it, like when you really care about a kid, they can feel it.
I feel like the things I've learned through my experiences in life can help them, and I feel like when I get done teaching them, one day they're going to be the adult that my kid has to look up to.
Making sure that they know that I care individually about them and I know about them. Sometimes sharing little pieces of myself that match something in their life is a big deal, like seeing themselves in another person at school and knowing that an adult cares enough that they would share that.
My goal is for them to just want to read, and so, as a result, I read a lot, and then I tell them all about the books that I've read. I just know that they just need someone to encourage them with just the right book at the right time.
It's finding what they need to be successful. Every student that we have has individual needs, and every student that we come across needs to have, you know, their own internal motivation. So, a lot of times it changes, and sometimes it doesn't. So, knowing how to relate to kids and knowing what that motivation needs to be on any given day is really important for them.
Remembering that they're kids, treat everyone with kindness, you know, tell them the truth and be honest, but in a soft and careful way.
And it's nice when you walk up to someone and they say, "Man, I really appreciate what you did for me when I was a kid." That is what matters. Right now, you're not going to get it, and so, you've got to keep fighting. Every day, you come in with a good attitude, and you work on building kids up. And we teach them to build each other up, and then we build them up, and then in the end, they're going to be more successful with that.
Teachers. All right, the last recognition I'd like to do is, since we're talking about teachers, we have a special recognition for one of our teachers, so at this time, I'm going to call Dan Up, the REA President, to talk about this award.
Tucker, if you want to come up, that would be great. Well, Tucker's coming up. Good evening, Board Chair Barlow, board members, Superintendent Munoz, Cabinet, and Ms. Edgar. It's with great pleasure that I'm here tonight to recognize Tucker Quintone as a nominee for the NEA Award for Teaching Excellence. This award, if you're not familiar with it, is the Teaching Excellence Program goal is to recognize educators from around the country who shine in their schools, communities, and in their own education. These educators are advocates for each other, their profession, for their students, and they embrace diversity with our staffs and in our communities and in the wider world. And I think Tucker's a great example of that. And I was pleased because I was asked, Tucker asked if I would write a recommendation for this award, and so, when Wendy contacted me and said, "Would you introduce him?", I was like, "Absolutely, I'm on here." So, while there are many things I could say about Tucker, I know we have a limited amount of time, so I'll keep it down to a couple of things, because people that know me know I can go forever. I want to hone it down to a couple of traits that are very important to me and things that I've noticed in Tucker, and I want to bring them out. And one is his strong belief in equity. Tucker's not only an advocate for equity, he's a practitioner. He's spent countless hours teaching others about equity at the local, state, and national level. He's a presenter of the Decolonizing the Classroom presentation. He's done that at the MEA, he's done it at the NEA Leadership Summit, and through our RPS Equity Series. When he isn't teaching or presenting, he's dedicating much of his time as the Chair of the NEA American Indian Alaska Native Caucus, President of the Education Minnesota Foundation Board, Member of the NEA Board of Directors, Member of Rochester American Indian Parent Advisory Council, and so on. As you can see, he doesn't stray or shy away from leadership roles either. And that brings me to the next part of the trait, or the next trait that enthuses me about Tucker, which is his positivity. Tucker's a positive force in the classroom. With his students, he has that belief that every child should have that opportunity to have a great education, and he advocates for that. He's our positive, he's a positive force in our union, and as an officer, a negotiator, and a member, he's always done what is right by our members. And as I said in my letter to the NEA, Tucker wants people to recognize for who they are, what they represent, and what they offer the world. And what more could we ask of our educators? And with all that, here he is in Rochester, and I would like to say thank you for being an RPS teacher. Thank you very much. It does feel a bit uncomfortable being recognized, because I really don't think I've done a lot on my own, but as I look across at the faces up here, I think I've worked with almost every one of you over the years on some committee or some project that we've done, and I can really look back and feel proud of some of the things that we've done here in Rochester, especially the equity work that we're doing, both with staff development and with the curriculum, the community schools that we've started here, and I was really glad to be a part of that. And now, to have the opportunity to teach at the ALC, it's really a highlight of my career, being able to connect with that staff there, with the administration, Tim Lindberg and Melissa Mogan, who I'm reconnecting with from John Marshall, it's fun again. And it's just an amazing staff there that really cares about the students, the students personally, and their success, and that they work so hard to make sure that those barriers are removed for those kids, and that they can really succeed academically and personally. They're not willing to rest. Today, we're already talking about how we can make things better next year. So, as I move forward in this process, this is a national award, so I'm Minnesota's representative, and they'll choose someone from all 50 states for this award. So, I just feel like I'm an ambassador for Rochester Public Schools, for Education Minnesota, for the REA, and my colleagues here, so thank you very much.
3.03, School Board Committee Assignment Updates. Does anyone have a committee update they'd like to make? Director Workman?
I have two, but I'll let somebody else go. You will let someone else go in between? I attended the Rochester Public School Foundation on the last meeting, and a lot of the conversation revolved around funds, and donations are always welcome. The big point of this foundation is to help teachers in the classroom with projects for their students, with their students that they might not otherwise be able to do. There are two people who are interested in joining the board. That's been a goal, is to expand the board. And I think I covered most of it.
Marvin.
Marvin.
I know, I forget sometimes, too. First of all, I don't think we have a representative from the Student School Board here tonight, do we? We'll give that report at our next meeting, or one of the representatives will. Quickly, a number of us attended in April two events. One was the World Festival at Mayo High School, the other was the Pow Wow at John Marshall High School, and I think all of us there were really gratified by the numbers of people who turned out, and by the representation of so many families, so many cultures, so many ethnicities, so much amazing diversity that we have in this community. It was, both events were absolutely generational. I was particularly taken at the Native American event, that there were drummers and singers, and participation by a number of people who came in beautiful costumes to drum and to dance. And at a couple of points, everyone was invited to come and join the dance. The number of little kids, two-years-old, three-years-old, who were out dancing with their parents and with their grandparents was amazing. I don't know that the kids really understood everything that was involved in it, but the joy and the participation was palpable, and I'm thinking that's how we pass our tradition, pass our cultures, pass our values onto our children, is just by inviting them to be with the grown-ups, and especially with the grandparents. So, anyway, they were amazing experiences.
Thank you. Director, any other updates? Director Workman?
Yes, I went to the Association of Metro School District's meeting on May 3rd, and just so any viewers would like to know what that is, that organization basically lobbies on behalf of the metro area schools, and because our size more matches the size of those districts up there, we are also a member of it. So, I was really, really pleased that Mary Catherine Ricker, who is the new Department of Education Commissioner, was our guest speaker, and she commended all of the people who spoke before the legislature, educating the policymakers about special education as well as general education. As you may know, the legislature is getting into its final run, where they determine how much money we have for the next biennium, and it's really critical that our funding remains stable. She's concerned that the grants for pre-K education would possibly be going away, so that people who can't afford it would have to pay a fee again. So, that is one of her other areas of focus. Some of the other things that affect our students is housing assistance to families with school-age students, so that they have some stability, invest in mental health, not only through the Department of Education, but also through Health and Human Services. And finally, what is the revenue it will take to invest in our students? She didn't give me a dollar number, but I really like the word "invest" rather than "spend", because we are investing in our future, and it's important. She talked a little bit about school climate, less thinking about school in a traditional way, and that it's more than just school safety. She said that she thinks that we should be immersed in arts education as well as conflict resolution, and that arts education does help conflict resolution. In the high schools, she was pleased that we are, not just us, but generally throughout the state, that school districts are paying attention to a lot of different kinds of pathways and the diversity of programs that are open to students. And I think I'd like to commend Superintendent Munoz and his team in establishing all of the programs that we've had at CTEC and so on. Then she finally said, for graduation rates, that we really need to listen to the stories behind the numbers, the students' stories, and I think that came out really well in the short video that we saw for Teacher Appreciation Week. Graduation rates are up, and she reminded us that those graduation reports are based on four years in high school, but that in Minnesota, we don't give up on students after that, and we also have students who take five or six years, but they do graduate. In many cases, they can get credit recovery and college credit at the same time, which gives them an extra boost. I could talk for another 10 minutes, but probably not everybody's going to be real excited about that. She was, yeah, it was a good meeting. She was just very, very, very positive about what we're doing generally with equity, our intentionality about that, and so on. So, like I said, if you guys want to talk to me more about this after the meeting or at a later time, I'd be happy to, because it was just a wonderful presentation. We also had a couple of other guests, but she was the most momentous one. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Workman. Concern Agenda, this is an action item. Does anyone want any item removed for separate consideration?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we have a few retirements, teacher retirements. The first one is Martha Keeney. She's a music teacher at George Gibbs Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the day, October 19th, 2019. She's been with the district 25 years. This next one is Wendy Chris, art teacher at Bishop and Gibbs Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 30th, 2019, 21 years with the district. Anne McGuire, teacher for the Development of Disabled, mild to moderate, at ESC Rail. Retirement effective the end of the day, July 23rd, 2019, 24 years of service. Lisa Rosloff, second-grade teacher, Bamber Valley Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the day, September 23rd, 2019, 26 years. Daniel Sherman, music teacher, Bamber Valley Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 30th, 2019, and 23 years. Malady Thompson, second-grade teacher, Churchill Elementary School. Retirement effective the end of the day, June 3rd, 2019, and 32 years. And the last one is Beth Windhorse, teacher of Deaf and Hard of Hearing at Mayo High School. Retirement effective the end of the day, November 2nd, 2019, 13 years. And if you total those individuals up, 164 years of service to the district, so thank them for their service to our schools.
High Student Achievement, 5.01. Approval of Research Proposal, Transcranial Magnetic Stimulation for Depression in Adolescents. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Brenda Witchman, Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction.
Good evening, School Board. Now that I've been through this a few times enough to understand the process, and we have a couple of new board members, I thought I'd just very quickly review how people get here, to assure you that this isn't the first conversation we've had with this researcher. So, people make requests, and they aren't always sure where to go with a research request, but people in the district know, and the researchers find their way to me, and then I review the proposal, and if I kind of get the gist of it enough, I'll just take it directly to Superintendent Munoz. Sometimes I meet with the researcher if I feel like I need more information, and then the superintendent and I talk about whether or not we want to bring that forward. Then the researcher brings forth many, many documents, and I try to include as many in the board docs as I feel you need to make a good decision. I don't always put everything in there. I think this current one, there are about 74 pages, so, very thorough, very thorough. So, like I said, it's my goal to get you enough information to make a decision, but not to deluge you with too much. And then I arrange for the researcher to come here to be present at a board meeting. And this current research in front of you tonight is very timely with our And this current research in front of you tonight is very timely with our mental health initiatives in the district. So at this time, Mayo Clinic researcher and physician, Dr. Kirkland, is going to come forward. And I have your PowerPoint. I'll get that ready for you. And all of your questions go to him. I just get him here.
If you want to come over here.
No, we don't. You have the clicker.
You can go there or it depends on you.
I mean, we better, because we don't have the clicker.
We don't have a clicker.
Oh. Thank you very much for making time for me and your busy agenda tonight. I'm also a father, a grateful father with a son in your school system, so thank you for all you do. And for the past 10 years or so, I've been very interested in the idea of bringing more neuroscience into the practice of child and adolescent psychiatry with depression in particular, trying to bring, you know, better tools and treatments to bear to improve outcomes. And this is one aspect of what we've been working on for over 10 years now. And we've just gotten to the point where we're able to do more meaningful studies. This current study is funded by our tax dollars, by the National Institute of Health. And it's also, I apologize for the very dense paperwork you probably have, but that's just to note that the ethical conduct and safety is regulated by the FDA, the NIH, the Mayo Clinic Institutional Review Board, and the University of Minnesota Institutional Review Board. So we have a, it's actually a joint collaboration with Mayo Clinic and the University of Minnesota. So this is just an overview of what the treatment entails. It's much different than standard of care right now in that we, you know, we use antidepressant medications and typically what's called cognitive behavioral therapy. So with this treatment, we use a coil put over what's called the prefrontal cortex, the area of the brain that's involved, the neurocircuitry's involved in depression and anxiety. And with magnetic pulses, we can actually generate gentle electrical current in that area of the brain, which is the brain's currency. And this is a treatment that's now widely available for adults, but not yet FDA-approved for teenagers. So our, again, our line of research is to adapt and better understand the safety and the best way to implement this into treatment for adolescents. The current study is, from a psychiatrist and a parent perspective, is nice because it actually, I've done studies before that involve placebos that are, you know, a sham treatment arm. This one is, the two arms of the study actually, we think will be active and helpful for depression. And basically, the adolescents that participate in this study are randomized to what's called 10 Hz or 1 Hz TMS, just based on the speed of the magnetic pulses. We were collecting a variety of brain biomarkers with neurophysiologic tools and a very sophisticated MRI with our colleagues at the University of Minnesota. So this is very busy, but this is just to kind of note what I said, that it's a six-week protocol with fairly time-intensive with very close, very close clinical monitoring as well on a weekly basis. We also have another part of the study that for youth that do not benefit from this, from this first portion, can go into another, if they're interested, they can go into another two-week protocol with an even newer way to dose this treatment. A lot of this is very busy and really goes over what I said, but basically, we're actively recruiting patients that are ages 12 to 18 that have significant depressive symptoms. These are not, you know, life stressors, you know, I failed the test, I broke up with my girlfriend kind of situations. We do what's called the Children's Depression Rating Scale. If they get a 40 or greater on that, which involves an interview with the parent, that denotes moderate to severe depression and it's a standard for these kind of research studies. We're very careful if there's been any suicidality. We typically have to follow the patients clinically for a period of six months before we can, before they can participate in a trial such as this. The biggest safety concern with this, it's quite rare, but you can actually induce a seizure with this treatment, so we're very careful about patients with a neurologic history of any sort, epilepsy seizures, brain surgeries are excluded at this point. In the future, we hope to perfect this so that it can be delivered safely to that population as well. I know that was relatively brief, but I want to be respectful of your time and I'm glad to field questions now or later electronically or telephonically, whatever's most expeditious and helpful. And this, I left the punchline out, I'm sorry. I think, I don't know if everybody knows, that this is a request. We have a Mayo Clinic-approved flyer that we are hoping to distribute on Peachtree just to raise awareness. And I would note that families that contact our research team, we make every effort. Many of them will not ultimately want to do the study. It's voluntary every step of the way. Many of them won't qualify, but we go to great lengths to find them what they need in terms of clinical care because many of them are in crisis often. Okay.
Sure. Questions?
So, I understand this correctly, you're just asking permission to put information out and let them know that you're recruiting? I mean, other than that, the district really has no involvement whatsoever?
Yes, sir. No research on campus or anything like that, just a flyer.
Director Seiglinger.
Thank you for your presentation and you are correct. There's a lot of information here that, so forgive me if I'm asking a question that might be available. Are you looking for students who have already been diagnosed with depression or are you just saying anybody could come in and get screened and then perhaps go into the study?
Either way.
Either way.
Yeah, okay. That's a good question.
And as far as the CDSR, that's initiated not onsite, but at the clinic. Are there referrals that the district could make or again, is this all initiated on behalf of the child via the parent or?
I'd be thrilled to collaborate with the school system if there were opportunities of that sort, but to just participate in the study, patients that are 17 and younger would need parental consent. 18-year-olds, actually, they can, they're legal age, they can consent for the study. I'm not sure if that's answered here.
It did. And then finally, so with current therapies are, how would you gauge their success as relates to the CBT?
So, you know, what's called the TAD study, the Treatment of Adolescent Depression Study, was kind of the gold standard study that looked at SSRIs and cognitive behavioral therapy. And we know that the combination of those two are effective for many youth, but there's at least 30 to 40% of teenagers that won't respond to that. And we're not to the point yet, I wish we could identify early on who that is so they can go on to other things. This line of research is kind of, you know, inspired by that group of kids that are not going to do well with what we have to offer.
Yeah, I would just remind the board that we would, if you choose to support this, our role is only to make people aware. We would not make any recommendations because when districts make recommendations for services like this, then we could eventually be held responsible financially because we're making that recommendation. So it's really just us making people aware that this is available and reach out to Mayo Clinic to, if you want to participate.
Go ahead.
Director Marvin.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, you've provided an enormous amount of information online for us. And as Superintendent Munoz just said, because this is simply a request to use our resources to provide information to families, that this is a service that's available, I, short of what Ms. Workman was going to say, I would like to move this to action.
You stole my thunder.
Oh, seconded. Okay.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, we. Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approves the research study, transcranial magnetic stimulation for depression in adolescents.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now it passed.
Thumbs up.
Thank you.
7.01, approval of bids and related processes for student nutrition services. Briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Sherry Knutson, Coordinator of Student Nutrition Services. And Angie, it looks like Angie's joining as well. They will brief us on this item.
We're here tonight to ask approval of three bids and related processes for student nutrition services for the 1920 school year. First, we're asking for approval to renew our purchasing agreement with Upper Lakes Foods for our food products. Secondly, we're asking for approval for the milk and milk products. The bid was sent to four vendors and we had one bid that was received from a local entity. And thirdly, we're asking for approval for our paper products. This bid was sent to five vendors with one bid received. You can see the total amounts listed for each of those particular bid items.
Any discussion? Mr. Schusner.
Any idea why only one of five would respond?
For the paper. I believe in the bid document that we're asking for a fairly high percentage, almost of 90%, of a particular vendor being able to supply all the products that we need for the operation. So that probably limited the scope as far as a potential vendor to bid.
And was the one response fairly in line with last year's cost?
It is, yes. It is the same vendor as we presently are dealing with.
Additional questions?
Thank you, ladies, for being here. And since you're here and you're some of my favorite people, I hate to let you go with no questions.
Did you bring food?
Did you bring any snacks? Because we, no. Really, I don't really have much, but I know that this, you know, this seems like our annual thing and we always do it and it's really routine, but I know it represents a lot of hard work, especially with things like the milk products and the different kinds of milks and the, you know, lactose-free milk, things that weren't around back in younger days. So just wanted to express appreciation and know that this is an important part. And as we heard, you serve a heck of a lot of meals around here, so that's awesome. So in that spirit, I would like to move this to action.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bid resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby authorize student nutrition services to purchase food products from Upper Lake Foods, Clocat, Minnesota, through the multi-unit group national joint powers alliance contract. And the estimated amount of $2,808,000 for the 2019-2020 fiscal year to be funded from the student nutrition services budget. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept the bid from Kemp's LLC of Rochester, Minnesota, in the estimated amount of $433,414,080 for the purchase of milk and milk products for all schools for the 2019-2020 fiscal year to be funded from the student nutrition services budget. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept the bid from Trio Supply Company of Minnesota and Minneapolis in the estimated amount of $202,870,030 for the purchase of paper products for all schools for the 2019-2020 fiscal year to be funded from the student nutrition services budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Chair will entertain a five-minute break at this time. 6:45 PM. 7.02, rejection of base bid D from CDWG for Chromebooks and acceptance of alternate rebid for Chromebooks. Briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. John Carlson, Executive Director of Finance, will brief us on this agenda item.
All right. Thank you, Chair Barlow and members of the School Board. I'm here tonight to ask for two things, to reject a bid that we approved last meeting and reapprove a bid opening we had yesterday. So, so I was sitting here thinking, how do you introduce that you made a mistake? I thought maybe you tell a story, make a joke, but I thought I'd just get up here and say we made a mistake. In the purchasing department, we got confused between our GBs and our SSDs and we got the wrong specs on the last bid. So what we ended up doing was approving a bid for Chromebooks that was less than what we had specced and that's why the price came in cheaper than what we assumed it would. After we approved it, one of the vendors challenged us on that, rightly so, because they had submitted a bid that met the specifications that we were asking for. So what we did was we immediately worked to correct that. We put the legal notices online, we put them in the newspaper, followed the 14-day waiting period that the law requires, and we opened the bids again yesterday. Now, what we didn't expect was that the prices would go down $22 per unit on 2,528 Chromebooks, so we're actually here to reapprove at $55,616 less than what we had previously approved. So the motion would be a two-part, reject the bids from last time and then reapprove yesterday's bid.
Could you make more mystics like that, please? So on the bid, on the bid that you're recommending, was that the same vendor that we had the first time?
Correct, correct.
But with everything, all the information that you needed?
Correct. So they, we rewrote the spec for the four gigabytes of RAM and the 16 or the 32 gigabyte solid-state drives. And the bid, or the company that won it last time dropped their price by $22 per unit. So, and then there was a competitive bid that was like a dollar more per unit than what they bid, so.
Director Marvin.
This is what transparency looks like. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, I appreciate that. And this is good news financially as well as just the whole transparency thing. I'd like to move this to action.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby reject base bid D of bid number 040419, previously approved in April 16th, on April 16th, 2019 due to an irregularity and bid responses received. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby accept base bid A of bid number 050619 from CDWG for the purchase of 2,528 HB Chromebooks in the amount of $417,000, $417,120. And be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby reject base bid C of bid number 050619 due to no bid responses received.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Just to point out that HP is a better product.
I was just going to comment because I didn't mention that before, but base bid C, I think, was for Acer.
Yes.
And so we got no responses on that, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Approval of 2018-19 budget adjustments as of March 31st, 2019. This is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. Carlson will brief us on this agenda item as well.
Great. We're here to do budget adjustments for the third quarter. When we do the third quarter budget adjustments, they're usually pretty routine. They catch any. any grants, donations, extra federal money that has been awarded to us, and then anything like, we've got some odd things in there that don't happen all the time, like selling a building or issuing some debt. So, again, very, I would say, easy budget adjustments to walk through tonight. So, this is a slide that we've gotten used to looking at, so basically, the last time we looked at budget adjustments in the general fund, we had a two hundred and twenty-six point four million dollar revenue budget with two hundred and thirty-one point two million dollars of expenditures, that's the far-left column there, and the adjustments that we're asking for here at the third quarter is seven point seven million in additional revenues, eight point one million dollars in additional expenditures, that would bring us up to two hundred and thirty-four point one million, and two hundred and thirty-nine point three million on the expense. So what are the things that are making up that approximately eight million dollars worth of change? The technology certificates of participation, that was debt that was issued in December, four point seven million of that. We sold the MSB building for two point three million. We have some extra special ed federal money, three hundred thousand dollars that we had not accounted for before, grants and donations around two hundred thousand, and then we learned of approximately a hundred thousand dollars of transportation money that was coming in to reimburse us for foster care transportation in the previous year. So, all those total roughly eight million dollars there in change. The non-allocated fund is just kind of a subcomponent of the general fund, it's where we track the site building donations and fundraisers, money that comes in. There's six hundred thousand dollars of new donations that have come in that we're rolling out, letting the school buildings spend those, so there'd be one point one million dollars of revenue and one point nine million dollars of expense if they spent it all. They'd end with zero dollars of donated money left over at the end of the year.
Quick question, what do you mean by donated money?
So this is money that, again, it comes in as a donation, so the school-
Like from the public?
From the public, from parents, whatever.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Different fundraisers, yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so here's our listing of FTE. There has not been a lot of change since the fall. The fall is the middle column, where we started the year as the far-left column, so where we're at here in April, we're up one point one teacher FTE, and we're up about four para So all total, we're up to two thousand five hundred ninety-seven point six FTE in the budget. When we started the budget last year, if you remember from our discussions, we had put ten contingent FTE in there for teachers if we needed, and at the end of the first quarter, we asked for an additional five because we're, we had a lot of growth over the summer, and we were trying to balance classrooms out, so we asked for an additional five based on where we were standing at that point. We've used fourteen point six of that budget so far, and we don't use that to hire a hundred percent teachers, we, we will use it to hire paras to, you know, if we need a one-on-one need or something like that. And the price of a para is roughly about forty-five percent of a teacher, so we're just doing a little conversion there to help you understand that we've used ninety-five percent of that budget up. So, where are we headed to at the end of the school year? If we spend everything in the general fund that we've got budgeted, we'd end at seven point three percent fund balance, and so for those that don't deal in fund balances every day like me, seven point three percent means that that's about nineteen days' worth of savings, setting aside at the end of the year in case money doesn't come in, in a future year, or there's some very unusual expense. So, you know, I hate to say it, but I've already heard the word shutdown being rumored at the state level, so if there were a shutdown, we've got about nineteen days, hopefully, of money on hand to be able to pay our bills. One thing to note there is we've got seventy-six FTE, or seventy-six positions in the budget that are budgeted, but were unfilled when we last ran. So, we've been dealing a lot with substitute positions and just vacant positions, again, all year long. In our food service department, we're making some adjustments to account for the ten snow days, so there's gonna be about six hundred thousand dollars less in revenue coming in because of that. I know the snow day law is one we're still trying to understand, but there would be no payment for those lunches and breakfasts that were missed. So, while we would get all of our state aid potentially if we accepted those snow days in our general fund, we would not get paid for missed sales of lunches and breakfasts. So then we also took out about four hundred thousand dollars worth of expense because being closed for ten days, we're buying less food and paper products now for the year. But we're still expected to end the year with about two point nine million dollars in our food service fund balance. In our community ed fund, there are not much of a change, about three hundred thousand dollars of additional grant money. In our construction fund, we issued the debt to pay for the big project at Bamber Valley this summer, plus some other big projects, so that twenty-four point five million interest income's about three hundred thousand dollars, and some utility company rebates, about a hundred thousand dollars that have come in.
Mr. Carlson, before you, if you wouldn't mind going back to the-
Sure.
Food service budget just for a moment, and, uh, to provide some understanding, if you will. So, the, the state funding takes care of teachers and, and the monies that SNS, the unpaid snow days that they, can you help me kind of understand that-
Sure.
How that payment occurs there?
Sure. So, in the general fund, we're mostly paid on the number of students enrolled, and a portion thereof, if they're here for a part of a year. So that's called an average daily membership. And so we're gonna get paid based on the number of days a student is enrolled in the general fund. And the law reads that notwithstanding the snow days or whatever, we'll still get paid a hundred percent for the students that were enrolled the whole school year. In the food service fund, it's based on sales to students, if they're buying their lunches or their breakfasts, and then there's a federal and a state reimbursement portion in there as well, but you have to claim the number of sales that you had. And so on a, any given day, there's roughly around fifty-five thousand dollars worth of revenue in our food service fund for selling breakfast and selling lunches. So, when you close for ten days, just multiply fifty-five thousand times ten, we're missing five hundred and fifty to six hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue now.
So, that revenue also then, I don't want to assume, but salaries-
Correct.
For those who work in this area come from?
Correct. All of the, all the salaries for that department are paid out of this fund, so that's part of the nine point four million dollars there. This is where their salaries benefits, and then food is a big cost as well in that budget, of course.
Thank you.
So, basically, what we're reducing there is, is the amount of, the less that we'll spend on food, not necessarily the less amount we'll pay in wages, but the amount of food we don't have to buy then.
And I guess I'll add a little bit semi-related. We are, we are working on how we want to address the new legislation and how we're gonna pay people, and we have informed their union leadership that we are working on that, so it just takes a little time to figure out all the pieces. First of all, we're waiting for MDE to interpret it for us, and then, then we have to decide how we want to do it, what's best for our district.
That's right. All right, we're up to debt service. So, part of the issuance of the facility maintenance bonds was nine hundred thousand dollars, and that got put into the debt service fund to make the first interest payment, so that's the-
Johnny, you skipped one.
Community ed and construction?
Construction, construction.
Okay. Construction, twenty-four five in facility maintenance bonds, three hundred thousand in interest, hundred thousand in utility company rebates, for about twenty-five million in adjustments. All right, we're good on debt service? All right. HRA trust, this is a new one that's gonna start appearing in our reports. We're implementing a government accounting standards board policy that we have to now account for this money that we're holding on behalf of our employees for their health reimbursement accounts. We've never had to do this before, we just sent the money off to a company called MidAmerica, they held it, they reimbursed the employees. We chose to terminate our contract with MidAmerica, pull the money back here, and actually, now we're using Optum as a vendor, which is going very well. Our employees seem to be reacting very positively to that and like it, and so that's how they request the reimbursement, but we hold the money for the employees until they reimburse, until they request reimbursement. So about four point four million dollars is the money coming into this trust. I think by June thirtieth, we've been spending around eighty thousand dollars a week on reimbursements going out, so we think it'll be about nine hundred thousand dollars by the time we get to the end of the year. So there'll be about three and a half million sitting there in this account for employees to draw on as they keep sending in their receipts and going to the doctor and such. So, we're just gonna have to start reporting that to you as another fund. Work comp, not much of adjustment, other than we have had a little uptick in our claims, so we put another two hundred thousand dollars of expected claims costs there. We'll still end with about four hundred thousand dollars in the work comp fund. We're not making any changes in dental fund, we'd have about a hundred thousand dollars left over there at the end of the school year, and then our health insurance fund, no changes as well, and we're projecting to end the year at fourteen point two million dollars setting aside there. Paper Tiger's a very small fund that we use to track internally costs for printing, and then our OPEB trust is kind of similar to the HRA trust, we have to set aside dollars for our employees, for retirees, for their healthcare costs, and we're gonna have about eleven point eight million dollars there. The uptick of two hundred thousand dollars is extra interest that we've been earning. And I think that's the end of the third quarter, so there's detailed, line-by-lines showing the different funds, it's a very high-level presentation.
Director Schlesner.
For HRA, do you anticipate interest revenues like OPEB?
Yes, we do. We will earn some interest on that. We also have to pay those fees to Optum, so we're hoping they kind of wash each other out so that what we owe Optum for fees can be covered by the interest that the money earns. Hopefully, no cost to the district.
Director Adamson.
When you said we have nineteen days of operating costs and fund balance reserve, nineteen school days or nineteen calendar days?
I would say that's nineteen school days, nineteen calendar, nineteen Monday through Fridays, so about four weeks. Yes, that's, there's not a lot there, should something happen, so just wanna always reiterate that, if you, if you just hear seven point three percent, you don't really know, but that's nineteen days' worth of spending sitting aside.
So we know how much to panic if we hear what's happening.
That's right.
Director Workman.
On the attachment, what was it called, summary by funds?
Sure.
If you could pull that up for a minute-
Yes.
And help me understand this. So, I understood what you had at the bottom with the arrows, but I noticed that there are a whole bunch of zeros in the right blue column.
Oh, sure, mhm.
Do those get filled in, and then does that change the number at the bottom, or?
Good question. So, yes, we're, we're planning that, you know, like, banned uniforms, donated funds, facility vehicles.
Exactly.
That we'll fully spend all of those dollars that we're setting aside from the previous year, but what typically happens is they don't get spent, and so then we just set them aside in a line item there, so that zero will change to a, a positive number at some point.
And you do that after?
We do that as we're closing the books in September, once we've paid all the bills through June thirtieth, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to move this to action.
Second.
Any discussion? Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 approved the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget adjustments through March thirty-first, twenty nineteen as presented.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Item seven oh four and seven oh five, closed session. Seven oh four dealing with property, and section seven oh five, student expulsion.
Pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point oh five subdivision three, I make a motion to move into closed session to discuss potential real estate transactions. And immediately following, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, section thirteen D point oh five subdivision two A three, move into closed session for consideration of educational data and the administration's recommendation with respect to the proposed removal from enrollment of students who are not in compliance with the requirements of Minnesota statutes, section one twenty-one A point one five.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move into closed session at seven oh five PM. Convening our meeting at eight oh seven PM. This is seven oh six. Now therefore bid resolved as follows. One, the School Board hereby accepts and adopts the facts and conclusions outlined in the notice of proposed expulsion as the basis for its decision. Two, the School Board hereby expels the student from the school of, from the Schools of Independent School District Number five thirty-five Rochester, from May seventh, twenty nineteen through May sixth, twenty twenty. Three, the superintendent or designee is directed to mail the following to the student and to the student's parent. A copy of this resolution and a letter stating that the student has been expelled from May seventh, twenty nineteen through May sixth, twenty twenty, and may apply to resume attending school in the district the first school day after the period of expulsion ends. Four, the superintendent or designee is directed to identify the alternative educational services or special education and related services that are available to the student during the period of expulsion, if the student wishes to take advantage of them. Five, the superintendent or designee is directed to make an electronic report of this expulsion to the Commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education within thirty calendar days as required under Minnesota statutes, section one twenty-one A point five three. Be it further resolved that the student is not allowed on any Rochester Public Schools property, except for the building to which the student is assigned, nor is the student allowed to participate in any extracurricular school activities during the period of this expulsion.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. This meeting is adjourned at eight oh nine PM.